Yo, what's up? It's your boy DJ L seven. As you know, I'm interviewing every single candidate running for office in New York City. And today I got a special guest right here. I'm gonna let him introduce himself. Now we don't mispronounce his name. That's how I always do it.
Absolutely.
Okay, you ready?
Yeah.
Okay, this is.
Hi, I'm Zach Weiner.
Wait, wait, let's go for the, oh, we're going for the real thing now, you're right?
Oh, yeah.
That was just, that was just the warm.
Oh, okay, alright, alright.
It's the warm, so you know it's coming.
Yeah, okay. I have it rolling. It's okay with you, right?
Yeah, 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 alright, okay, okay.
Cut it out.
Big smile, let's put a thumbnail. Ready?
Yeah.
Yo, what's up? It's your boy DJ L seven. As you know, I'm interviewing every single person running for office here in New York City, elected position, and we got one of the candidates right here, but I'm gonna let him introduce himself. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Zach Weiner. I'm running for city council seat, District Six, on the Upper West Side, and I'm, I'm really thrilled to be doing this interview. And hello to everyone.
Okay, so my, uh, my channel is mostly about activism, right? Uh, you're running for this candidacy. Do you have a background as in terms of, uh, you know, community service types of thing? What's, what's the story there?
Uh, I've lived in this neighborhood my entire life. Uh, my background professionally is film. Uh, but my family, we were raised on idea of, of community, of making the home a place of support. We've had a lot of people without our home who've lived with us. Um, and, and that's been a lot of the information, honestly, and a lot of my involvement has been with people who've been homeless in the neighborhood as, as, uh, Carol Tannen, as you're talking, there's no one poorer than, than a homeless person and, uh, also no one more honest. They're a great person to hang out with and talk with. I really, I get it, I, I, uh, I, I enjoy their conversations. So that was more of my community activism, but honestly, no, really generally, very little activism until this campaign in this past year, uh, when I realized just the, the depth of failure of the, the political infrastructure around here, and, uh, we've gotten very involved since then, in the past year.
That's cool. Okay, so, um, actually, I am very, uh, close to the homeless community as well, so that's gonna be quite interesting. Let's, uh, continue to delve into the topic here. So the thing is, um, I work with a bunch of different, uh, political organizations. And some of these organizations have, you know, different interests and, uh, you know, coalitions can be very powerful way of getting your, your stuff across, so. Well, one of the big ones I work with is in Assange, uh, different Assange groups. So how do you feel about, uh, freeing Assange?
I don't support freeing Assange in particular, but I'm, I think it's incredibly important that we do a lot more to give digital power to individuals. I think there's so much, uh, that's dangerous. I mean, for me, I shouldn't even say anything on Assange because my whole philosophy is I'm a hyper localist. And I really like to speak to what's going on in my neighborhood. Uh, but I definitely, definitely believe in a lot of digi-, I think digital is the way for empowering people. The, uh, kiosks, uh, Link NYC, I, I think is something that needs to be expanded upon. I think it's something that's hugely important, especially for the homeless population. They get internet, they, uh, they, they, they can do so much on it and, uh, it's, it's actually, if you just took the population of Link NYC, that's, that's the tenth biggest city. Of the, the population of users of Link NYC, that's the tenth biggest city in, uh, the country. And that's an avenue where we can provide services directly to, to people, so. In essence, I think, I think just back to Assange and back to democ- democratizing the internet, I think that's an example locally where, where we've done that and we can build upon that, where we've circumvented the monopolies and circumvented a lot of the, the, the people that will, that, that prevent, uh, actual real power on the internet.
Okay, interesting, cuz, um, one of the things that I found is that, you know, being in the game as, as is to say, a lot of times that the services and, you know, projects that are supposed to be helping people end up actually damaging them often. Um, in many some different ways, so, uh,
Totally.
You said there, there's a program that you guys are rolling out right now that is helping people. Tell me a little bit more about, I'd like to know how that's working out.
Oh, completely, I'd love, I'd love to. We don't, we don't get that question enough. Everyone always wants these, uh, generalities. Uh, we have a number of programs which we're working on. Uh, one is called Startup Retail and another is Money Study. I think Money Study probably is more pertinent to this conversation. Money Study is an effort to bring financial literacy education directly to, to students. Um, not necessarily even in high school, but people who are adults. It's something I wish I had learned a lot more about. Uh, we're currently, uh, launched our first program in the, uh, NYCHA Housing on sixty first.
Okay.
With, uh, the Tenant Association head, he's a phenomenal activist yourself, Patty Ryan, and we have, we so far only have one student which has signed on, but we're doing our best. We're gonna be handing out flyers. And the way Money Study works is, uh, we have a number of retired hedge fund workers who, who are now working as, uh, advisors, educators, people that are available, and there's a stock market game, which is a popular game in a lot of schools. Uh, where you, it's a mock stock market. And here, along with the financial literacy, everyone gets a certain amount of virtual currency. And you play and the winner is gonna win three thousand dollars and everyone else is gonna get a certain amount that goes into a mutual fund, which they can continue to grow, uh, going forward through Robin Hood and things like that. Um, and I think, you know, it's vital. I mean, whatever job you have, uh, this, this is a way to multiply it and as stacked as the financial institutions are against a, a lot of, you know, a lot of individual investors, and we've learned this more recently, it's still a lot of opportunities and a lot of conversations back to, um, the homeless population as well, where I tried to get some of that work done there, but unfortunately we were not as successful. Um, they were, they, they would tell me that, you know, in their view, they play dice, they play things like that, cuz they don't feel as if, that they, that it's truly a way to multiply money, you know, how many opportunities, but they're very excited about the stock market. Here's, sorry, am I running too long?
No, no, I, no, I, I think about what you're saying. Actually, to tell the truth, um, for my viewers out there.
Yeah.
Um, and remember before when you said you were excited about the questions that are being asked, and I'd like to say, one of the reasons why is because you have someone who's in the game actually dealing with this stuff hands on, so I'm not just like maybe who's just the surpassing interest or, uh,
Just like you?
Yeah, myself, yeah. So that's why, uh, you know, as a, someone who's operated programs, I'm looking at the specifics to understand how it's being developed. And I like a lot of things that I'm hearing, I'm, I'm gonna get to those specifics in a minute.
Yeah.
But that's when, when you have people who are, who know what they're talking about, you're gonna get into like deeper conversations, which, which is really needed, and I appreciate the fact that you can have it. You'll see some other people on my channel that are in the interviews and they can't have this level of conversation.
I love it. And, and one last thing I wanna add on, cuz that's so much what I'm looking for is deeper conversations and what I'm shocked, well, that was the shock I had when I first got into this, that that's not present, especially in this neighborhood. This is literally the capital of the Democratic Party. The largest donor, the two top donors zip codes is this zip code and the other zip code right above me. And that class and that group of people have not until recently been involved in local politics, and they're very serious people. So it's a very influential neighborhood, but one more thing about Money Study and in general is that's really, uh, the philosophy of our entire campaign. Is we are taking direct action immediately through a number of programs, including that one, to, to en-, to enact and enhance the neighborhood around us, um, right now, live. Cuz I-
So, yeah, so look, I'm twenty years, more than twenty years as an activist in the game. So I've seen like people like yourself come by and I've seen it work out and not work out, so still digging a little bit more, but this is a good sign when someone actually has done a little bit, uh, deeper thinking and has specific ideas of their own versus just parroting some platitudes and talking points. So things are looking, not, not saying that we're gonna line up or everything a hundred percent here, but yeah, but that's a good sign.
Well, please, give it to me hard, and I, and I'd love to learn from you during the interview and afterward, cuz twenty years, I have a lot of respect to you. I mean,
Yeah.
uh, that's very impressive. This is my first year, like I said, so it's-
Well, that financial education thing is, um, and thanks for being real about the fact of just having one, one student, but really that financial education is still necessary. Our schools, right, have been charging people thousands of dollars and wait till you hear about how crooked it gets, man. Oh, boy, we're just getting started, well, but to tell you the truth, the, um, you know, I'm actually a tutor and one thing that I have going is just plug myself just for a second, is I actually have students from all across the nation. And what I do is I have, um, I give them, and I often tell their parents that what they're learning in school is not relevant for the child, so I say, if you're gonna use the math, like have them do calculations like ninety-nine times five, right, five dollars ninety-five cents, four ninety-five at the store. Have them check your grocery prices, so it's actually relevant, right? Elon Musk, right, said that one of the great deals of the education system is that people don't know why they're learning what they're learning, right? The financial stuff. You got little Junior over there saying, you know, I think this stock is gonna go up and it goes up, and I think this, this stock, right, and paying attention. He can bring value to, to, to the household immediately. That whoa, isn't that what you're going to school for supposedly?
Right.
Right?
Totally. And that's a huge, I mean, that's a huge concern locally here for education is the disconnect between what they're learning and then what matters and especially what's gonna make them money.
Okay, so the city council, as you know, has a, um, you know, there, once again, there's a lot of specifics that are going that some people may be talking about. City council and the mayor has a, or the majority seats will flip due to, uh, term changes. So by having strategic, um, strategic, uh, alliances or maybe, what do they call it, uh, coalitions with other city council members, you might be able to actually pass a real curriculum change. You get what I mean? And because I'm talking to every single candidate, right, or attempting to do so, that puts me in one of the best positions to help and build that coalition.
No, I'd love to hear that. I'd love to hear that, cuz I love anyone that's gonna help me do this direct action. I wish I was getting more traction with it and every single person that comes on, it's like a holiday for us. We struggle. Every, well, for every one person, there's thirty that are either don't understand or not interested in doing direct actions, so that's awesome.
And a quick shout out to my boy Brendan Carpenter from the Yang Gang, who is real high up in the organization. I know he's really respected in that crew. I am protesting Yang, but that's on the side, right? But the thing is that, uh, uh, he actually found one of the most successful third parties in the nation called United Utah Party, the co-founder. And he also said that, you know, experience is only worth so much. So someone like yourself, I'm not afraid to have someone with new ideas, who's honest and has passion, that's okay. So it's not all about the experience, cuz sometimes people have experience in the wrong ways. And all the corrupt, all the problems, you know what I mean? So it's not all, but, you know, together, I think we can be very strong, so.
I completely agree. And I think just, what, there's this, uh, Timmerland quote, uh, the Genghis Khan's successor, who's not the best example, cuz he was, you know, he murdered millions of people, but he had a great quote, which was, I'd rather ten, ten soldiers in the right place than ten thousand in the wrong. And I think that's really especially true, I'm finding, in local politics here where a small coalition, sorry, stadium, yeah.
You, you, yeah.
This is exciting. This is what I wanna do is-
Did you say that quote from the beginning?
Uh, we're, uh, recording, yeah.
That's cool. Yeah, I can, I can edit and shape. Don't worry about it.
Oh, okay, yeah, uh, there's, um, this Timmerland quote, which is, I'd rather ten soldiers in the right place than ten thousand in the wrong. And, uh, I think that really applies here and especially I'm finding that in local politics here, that that it's the, the number of people in the right place can make a big difference. So you building a coalition, I love to hear it. I love the department.
We'll see. We got some games going on here. I'll get ready. We'll see, we'll see. It's not easy.
Yeah, it's, no, it's not easy.
Yang went into a private entrance for his, the ballot candidate petition. There's definitely like, that stuff going on. There's a lot of money at stake, millions of dollars in contracts and stuff like that. Do you think that everything's going up and up? How much is at stake, bro? You cannot redirect the pathway of millions and millions of dollars.
Certainly not.
Without stuff going up, without people showing up.
Totally. Well, again, for me, hyper local, I'm definitely aware of this, and I definitely encounter it here. Um, I definitely do, wanna do my best if I'm elected with those sorts of things, but yeah, I mean, in the neighborhood, I'm certainly finding money being squandered. Uh, in the discretionary budget of twenty twenty-one, the city council, uh, Helen Rosenthal, she gets a hundred and fifty thousand dollars discretionary. Thirty thousand dollars is going to Alvin Ailey Dance Studio. No dollars are going to a single program that has any impact on NYCHA public housing, uh, the severely mentally ill, the homeless. Thirty grand for Alvin Ailey, a private, well-funded institution. And I love the arts, but fuck ballet. I'm sorry, okay? I'm sorry, I'm sorry. But really, when it comes down to it, I, you know, I speak to Patty Ryan, I speak to people on the street who are homeless, and I'm finding out there's, there's, they're cutting their own wires that are loose, and they're raising money by their own rat poison in public housing. And, and, and the homeless, you know, and with the homeless population, they're having to team up and collaborate to convince people like my friend Carl with a K, who I'll, I'll send this video to, uh, to convince, you know, to talk to him, to, to help him and, and get him some support. And that, that kind of outreach and that kind of support where you have someone who's your friend who's saying this can be better in your life, and that's so vital, and that's not getting funded a dollar, a dollar. And no one pays attention around here, or I shouldn't say no one, a few people pay attention, and, and now that we are starting to, it's gonna make a big difference, and when I'm elected, if I'm elected, um, every single cent is gonna go to those two issues, the homeless and public housing, until those are fill, uh, fixed. And we have an outreach program and we have a situation where rats are not running to such a degree that it's hard to enter your lobby. And that there's lead in the walls, and that all the most pressing needs are met. Because I know that in other places like Alvin Ailey, they're very met. So sorry, sorry, I'm gonna do that. You gotta cut me off, or I'll rant and rant.
Well, there's like so many different pathways that just goes down, right? Like the thing is that, like, the thing we're editing this, right, because the thing is that Alvin Ailey may have like, you know, community service programs that they claim are gonna get cut, right? So like before you-
Well, I'll tell you, I know, yeah.
Before you posterize them, right, you wanna make sure that your ducks are lined up correctly.
It's minority dancing, and it's bringing attention to social issues, so.
I know, I know, well, you know, also the fact that you can also, like, there is a legitimate line of attack where you say that, you know, they are connected. So they're getting hooked up for certain people who are not. There needs to be review of that, right? But, um, before you posterize Alvin Ailey, right, they're very, um, there's a reason why they're playing that game, you know what I mean? So
You're right.
They, they may have protections, right? So
Yeah.
Not, right, yeah, that's okay, yeah.
I always speak carefully. I'm, I'm not polished, I'm not, I'm new at it.
Yeah, so before you blow up, right, yeah, so like, yeah.
I should've said the dance program.
Yeah, so that they will have friends and they will have a mailing list, and they'll try to portray them in a certain way, so, look, I'm,
I welcome it. I welcome it.
That's, that's the game. That's the game. It's all good, yeah. And you know, sometimes saying that can get you the press that you want, some, but really, you know the game by now, right? The, the game now, they've, they've adjusted in this new era. Now they just edgy, they just don't talk about you. That's the main strategy. You guys are facing that now, right? You guys have news where they stopped, they're like, why, why am I not getting covered?
Oh, wow.
That's the new game. It's, it's, they blind, it's a blanket of silence.
Yeah. Yeah, shadow ban, like on that, yeah.
Exactly. Oh, yeah, exactly. That's exactly how it works, yeah. So welcome to the new game. Now we gotta, we gotta dance, right? We cannot, uh, allow them to just beat us up without a, without a fight, you know?
Yes, yes. And, and definitely not. I mean, we're, we're working at that. We have our own media infrastructure. We have, um, a vast, vast email list and data which we achieve and acquire without consultants, without paying any money. Um, just through hard work and volunteer work and, uh, virtually every single registered Democrat in the neighborhood. And, uh, we feel pretty unbanable because we think that the, the gates are no longer worth guarding. Um, you can just reach the voter directly.
That's good. Now, most of my, uh, most of my, uh, audience is actually very pro Assange, so um, they'll probably be taken aback, right? Uh, maybe you can probably a little bit more, I think.
You want me to elaborate on that?
I can elaborate. Just a little bit more, yeah, because, uh, you know, I think that you're pretty cool and I want to get, I think that there's some belief to what you're saying. Uh, I'm just not sure that my audience is really gonna accept that, the, the way that was said right there, yeah, so.
I understand that.
You can see the shot, yeah?
Um, my understanding is that he committed some crimes against women. Uh, that's my understanding, so just at the moment, that's why I come down so hard on him. Is, I'm, it's something that's very sensitive to me and I've, I've, uh, been through it with close friends of mine, so I just, like, have a hard reaction. I'm honestly not abreast of it against, again, I'm hyper local. I very rarely comment on anything beyond the district, um, but-
Well, thanks for explaining that, you know, I mean, the, the local focus, right, yeah, it's not really something that he knows personally about, so that's fair. Uh, and the, the, um, the position that you're taking about the woman thing is that he has the right to stand trial for that. He's not been convicted yet, but you know, that, that's still fair, and there's still accusations out there, so if you choose to-
If he's exonerated, if he's exonerated,
Yeah.
then a hundred percent he should be free. I mean, by definition, he should be free.
But he hasn't even got the chance to, yeah, for his trial, yeah.
He hasn't got the chance to be in trial, and he should be, and it should be done totally legally, and in, in terms of, I totally understand from, from a guerrilla perspective, I, it's obviously an incredible thing that he achieved. And the level of geopolitical effect that he had, where he became a historical actor, and so many people that are individuals have just been, we've been rendered completely politically impotent for so long by this new game, so I understand all that, so. I hope they're forget, I hope they're patient with me, I mean.
That is what it is, yeah, that's, um, they're one of my political allies that I work with, so, you know, I always put them first, you know what I mean?
Good. I like to see that.
Okay, okay. The second one is vote about UBI. Do you support UBI?
I do with caveat, which is I think that, um, and back to Money Study, I mean, ideally it would be through my program, but I think that it should be attached to, um, specific educational programs, uh, and other programs where we make sure that the money becomes, I mean, UBI, no question, should be done, but I just wish that we could build on it and create a really creative society with it and talk about the, the creative and productive potential of the liberated people that will come from UBI. And I just, and I haven't seen that as much, maybe I'm not as well versed on that again, that's outside the district. An example I have, um, odd example is the yeshiva community, the Jewish community. So there's a, a UBI program in action in Israel where every single person that's, that's Hasidic, Orthodox, that's my background, uh, they get paid UBI. If they're learning, they're paid to learn, and their entire preoccupation is they study Talmud, ancient Jewish law. And I think, so, so my example is Money Study is, I love, like I mentioned before, we have that mutual fund. I would love if we had a mutual fund I could go into, but short answer, yes. Long answer, I have so many ideas of the next step and, and, and what we could do after. I think that's a no brainer that we do it.
Okay, so when you said, um, just trying to make this straight. So the thing is that the, um, the Hasidics, right, and I- I actually love, actually, one of my favorite stories about Jews is actually about the Hasidics, which is pretty cool. Maybe I get to share it one of these days. But, um, the thing is that, um, you said it was tied to educational, right? So the thing is that the Hasidics are studying the Book of Talmud and stuff like that, so people who, um, who are not necessarily studying religious texts or maybe just studying in general, right?
Yeah.
Um, you're saying they're not able to get UBI somehow or something?
No, no, I, I mean, I think everyone should get UBI. I just think that what I'm saying is
Okay. Okay.
if you're, when you're getting UBI and the conversation around it, cuz I believe there's a strong consensus, I want that U, I want that UBI, I said tied.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
So I said, I, I was, I was confusing. What I meant tied is invested. Like, I think UBI, we can grow it. Like example, Money Study, if it's held in a collectively shared mutual fund, that money's gonna grow and then you can cash out whenever. And that's an opportunity where this pa-, this money, um, if used collectively, can be such a powerful force to grow the money and create programs that we want and, and need. And the example from the, from the, from the yeshiva world and the Hasidic world, that's just an example where they're thinking beyond, oh, I don't have a job, I'm unemployed. No.
I, I, I'm still like struggling, I'm saying, so, because the thing is that
Yes, yeah.
if they take the money, right, now maybe they have the opportunity to put it into a mutual fund such as a five oh one or maybe Roth or whatever, IRA, whatever, yeah.
Or Money Study.
But the thing is that it's their income, so they could spend it however they want, so are,
Yeah.
like, are there some kind of like limitations? Like, once they get the income, are they required to put it into a mutual fund?
No.
So what is that? What is that?
Uh, it's more a rallying cry, more, and again, this is a hype, the hyper local in me that I'm not as well versed in this stuff, like we can, when we talk about the Upper West Side, I have a lot to say there, but you know, speaking on it, um, i- if, it, speaking on it is, is I guess just more from a, a spiritual perspective and a rallying cry is, I'm really excited about UBI. And I'm really excited about, of these programs as, uh, the beginning. And I just, and that's what I mean, is I think, you know, a lot of talk is about obsolescence and people that are no longer economically viable, and I think it should be absoluteness and increasing pursuits of perfection. I think someone is so much more than the job they used to have and unemployment, and that money is so powerful, so that, that's what I meant, is just you got me excited. I'm not normally asked about it. I think there's so many things we do, but of course, I think it's, it's beneficial for everyone in UBI, it's a no-brainer, and it goes so far on this community um, in so many different areas. I mean, the Money Study program, they can put it into the Educational Mutual Fund that they go control. I mean, there's so many people that artistically wanna be involved in the community. We have sixty-six empty retail storefronts that could be opportunities for, uh, with using your UBI to be entrepreneurs here. A lot of communities that have never been entrepreneurs. I have a program we can talk about later, Startup Retail, which is for that, um. So yeah, so I, I, to be clear, yes on UBI.
Appreciate it. I also have a group of people that work with disabilities, and one of the sad things about people with disabilities right now that they are allowed to be paid sub-minimum wage. I mean, maybe people that they have like a little low productivity or whatever because of disability, but we look at a middle, minimum wage and it's really kind of subsistence, you know, uh, especially people with disabilities. They often have higher, higher costs. How are you gonna pay rent?
Yeah.
Things like that on there. Um, would you be able to support, uh, minimum wage for people with disabilities, at least, like, you know?
I was not aware of this in the least bit. I, it was always a working assumption. I mean, minimum wage is minimum wage. I can't conceive of a situation where that would be, I mean, that sounds intolerable. I, I, I wanna look into it more before firmly committing, but I mean, at first glance, it sounds obvious, and I think back to UBI and this, it benefits the economy the more people have more money. Capitalism is predicated on a consumer base that can buy shoes and buy, and buy tickets to movies. The notion of this austerity and not giving people money, you're, you're, th- th- this is how capitalism is run. This is not, this is necessity for us. You know, there, there's an argument from a lot of different political ideologies, but just to take the neoliberal side for a second, you can't have a, a, an economy that's consumer-based without, without disabled people, for example, having, the more money they have in their pocket, they spend it. People spend it, and it goes around, and especially with all this money sloshing around, it's practically funny money, what the hell? I, I mean, I, that's-
There's different theories on that, uh, you know, different economic theories, but you know, um, yeah, if it does, you know, uh, cycling of money around is, uh, generally a good thing, so, yeah, I think, yeah.
Seems good to me?
Yeah, but spread the money around, trickle-down economics is kind of what, we all know that.
I don't know how that phrase got any traction. Trickle, who wants a trickle? I can't understand that.
That, that's legit. I like that.
That's a trickle. I can't even understand the messaging. If I was some, yeah, I don't, I, I don't understand, yeah.
Another group that I've been working with more recently, uh, the trans community, and shout out to Pogs for Bernie, um, Cyber Team, and whatever she calls herself, uh, the thing is that, um, a lot of times, we talked earlier about like rules and stuff like that, which is sometimes, you know, a lot of policy walks and, you know, these, uh, um, normal reporters and normal candidates, right, get all, uh, they love the policy, but the fact is that sometimes the policy doesn't make it to an implementation, right? The thing is that, right, you could have this great policy and then it doesn't matter if your workers aren't gonna actually follow that, that guideline then, and so what, right? So we look at the trans community and the thing is that, yeah, there's no laws saying that you can kick them out of their homes. But when they go into public housing, cuz they're often discriminating against, and they're in that situation with public housing, sometimes they face discrimination, like, you know, harassment, things like that, that end up bouncing them out of, uh, public housing unfairly.
Yeah.
What can we do to protect, uh, you know, trans people and other communities like them that are facing discrimination?
Yeah.
Uh,
Uh, I have, so, I, but again, I, my whole philosophy is direct action and, and I hate when I hear politicians or, or someone running who has any sort of position of power saying, we need. I don't, I mean, we need, but also we do right now, and, and one organization that used to exist, which I, I'm trying to bring back, my friend, um, used to run it, Red Umbrella. I don't know if you've heard of it. It was for sex workers. Uh, disproportionately, trans sex workers ended up in jail, and what they would do is they'd go to Rikers, uh, to provide emotional support, go to court for them and provide a lot of that. I think this is an example, I was not abreast of where we would want something like that, where we would want some sort of grassroots organization around here, and I I've been very much trying to rally more and more people to campaign for each of these issues, where I tell someone, when I get on the phone, I've yet to be on the phone with a trans member of this community, but I say, if you have an idea for something that can benefit your community, please tell me your wildest idea, and we have the resources of our campaign.
I could share with you, um, some of the different conversations that I had, just, uh, maybe see how you, how this, uh, how you feel about this, so. If we could say, let's so, say for instance, that people who are in the trans community, right, are maybe like, uh, represent, maybe let's just say one percent of the population. And we can see that the number of, uh, you know, or most of the population that are, uh, qualified for public housing. And then we see that the number of people that are trans actually in public housing is significantly lower, let's say like, maybe like point five percent. Maybe we could like take some special housing, put it aside for people with, uh, who are trans to try to protect them, or somehow, you know, uh, but then there's also complaint that it might be considered, uh, discrimination or, you know, by putting them all into one place, it's like ghettoization of that community, so.
Yeah.
But you know, like, they're also being denied services, so.
As a city councilperson or whatever, I mean, whatever happens in this election now that I've entered and now that I've built up an organization which can deliver services, I mean, one of the biggest roles I see is that there's a lot of money on the table and a lot of opportunities like housing. And if people come to me and say they're having that issue, then I wanna work with them to advocate for them and try to, and try to help them gain this, gain, work the system to get what they deserve and what they need, I mean.
That was an interesting statement, there's a lot of money on the table, so, kind of yes, kind of no, right, yeah? Um, and we see like a lot of tax money leaving the city. How would you fund programs like, that, you know, people are worrying about the money, you know, the tax revenue, right, businesses are closed, so. Yeah, the city has a big budget. It looks like that budget may shrink, um.
But it's big right now. It's very big right now. This year is, it's huge. What, am I correct, it's ninety-three billion?
Okay.
Or something, and then, and then league, it's some enormous number.
You know, also have my friends in the, uh, California, and a lot of people think California's struggling, but they made so much money cuz the internet's going crazy right now.
Right.
So some industries are making up.
Tax is flush, yeah, and I, and I mean, yeah, we've had the tax, um, base issue, but I do believe that we're based on the, the re, uh, real estate market, there's indicators that we're gonna have people of means that are coming back. Um, I think that you're saying a lot of money on the table. I mean, city council, back to, you have a, uh, as a city councilperson, I would have a hundred fifty grand in discretionary spending. And that money, uh, can go so far, cuz you can get matching funds, you can-
That's all, you know, see, exactly, a businessman knows how to like get, how to, how to double the money, triple the money, right, yeah, quadruple the money.
Grow it.
Yeah, right, yeah, exactly. Co-funding, exactly, it's one of the best ways to, to, to max out, so, I like that. So you've done this kind of work before, see, there's a lot of candidates out there who are running, never even heard of this stuff before.
I've done a lot from, for independent film, you really have to squeeze every penny and try to turn it into a nickel or a dime.
Respect, man. Same thing for a real activist, man.
Thank you. I'm, yeah, I'm really glad. I feel very sympathetic on this, and that has been my experience this past year, my first year of direct action. Um, regards to the trans community, I mean, um, I have trans friends. Uh, I have, I have trans, uh, uh, associates and people I've worked with and, and looking to work with, and the money is on the table. NYCHA has billions and billions of dollars. It, it's ultimately, like you said, whatever law you pass, it comes down to also getting it done and, and having it happen. And, uh, having someone in position of power, whether that be elected or even someone running an organization like I am now through, thanks to the campaign in this, in this year, um, on your, in your corner, uh, that's a way to get it. I mean, that's-
Can you make any promises or guarantees?
Yeah, I mean, if someone, I mean, if any single person, uh, comes to me with a legitimate, good-hearted need, I'm there for them. I'm, my number one priority is this neighborhood and the people in this neighborhood as represented, as Spire represented this neighborhood, but the city depends on the, and the neighborhood depends on the city, is the city and vice versa, and so so I would a hundred percent promise to be in the trans corner, um, in, in, in any inequity and, and not just inequity, but empowerment, we're gonna benefit, uh, in so many ways from getting that community into a position where they have enough of the Maslow hierarchy of needs. You have housing and you can start contributing and benefiting yourself, and then everyone's gonna grow, we can grow the pot, so I commit a hundred percent. You call me zachwener.com, you have these requests, you have something where you feel like you, you need an organization behind you, I'm there. I want you to call me.
Okay. I appreciate, I'm sure the trans community appreciates that. Um, let's talk about some of the issues that people are probably wondering about, you know, as regards to this election, so. Covid's been crazy. People wonder when the lives going back to normal, reopening, right? Is there a timeline? What, what do you think about that whole thing?
Um, in terms of reopening?
You get in, right, uh, what, what is their timeline for things going back to nor-
I think that we're gonna have to make a lot of, uh, efforts to revive, I mean, we had sixty-three million tourists, if I remember correctly, definitely sixty plus, uh, visiting New York prior to, in twenty nineteen. And obviously, we have not had a lot of tourists since then. I think a lot, a lot of my ideas and ideally a lot of the efforts of, of, and what we're doing in my organization, and I noticed, I think Ray McGuire has a plan for a parade. I think things like that and thinking creatively and using, utilizing the creative community to draw people back and make it fun to go outside. We don't know what twenty twenty-two is gonna look like in terms of the retail experience, for example, but what we do know is
Excuse me.
we're gonna have to work very hard to make it desirable to, to, to go outside to take a risk. It's still gonna be a risk for some people, and, and so I think that's where our head has to be at in terms of reopening and, um, fun. We gotta make New York fun, and we gotta make it livable, and I, you know, I talk to people, a lot of people who are leaving the city who I beg not to, I'm an evangelist for the city. Sometimes I forget, I'm talking to someone from England and I'm saying, you know, you can't hate New York, and he's like, well, you know, I live in England, and I'm like, that's a good point, I don't think it matters as much, but, um, they say to me, you know, the reason I stay is in the museum. They say to me, you know, the reason I stay is in the museums and the culture and and so we have to, that has to be something prioritized and.
So when do you think it's uh, it sounds like you're gonna reopen the museums and stuff like that, when is it gonna reopen? On what timeline?
Uh I'm I'm working on things, uh you know, direct action, I'm trying to have events in the park, trying to have events in large stores, trying to have very safe, very consistent, you know, very, very cautious.
Yeah.
But but appealing events right now and I think the timeline is, I do think by the time I would be in office twenty twenty two, we're gonna be in a position where we can take a tourist minded approach. Um at that point, I do think we'll be open enough then.
Okay, cool, um so that's uh coming pretty soon, um most answers have gone like for the summer, people say that, you know, people are not just gonna wear the masks and. They saw the thousand people out last summer in the parks hanging out, you know what I mean, um we'll see where that will be going.
I wear my mask, American flag mask, I wear it everywhere.
Yeah. But by the time the election happened, it will be uh you know, I think the summer of twenty twenty one, yeah, around there?
Yes, June, June tenth, early July.
Yeah, so that yeah, so twenty twenty two is just like a couple months after that, so um that's good, you know, and if you were pro reopening, then. Right, if you, who isn't pro reopening, yeah.
Right, we want it, we want it, I mean, we're social creatures.
It's funny, yeah. Yeah, exactly, uh now let's talk about um move on to, we see this summer, it's also gonna be crazy with this whole police stuff, police reform.
Yeah.
What are your ideas for police reform? Defund the police, that's a hot topic, so what do you think about that?
Yeah. So this is something where I thought most deeply about and uh one of the things I thought most deeply about, I actually was being criticized, I Joe, um my campaign manager is here, he runs Twitter and. Uh he pointed out people were criticizing me for not having, I've got it coming soon on my website, for uh but that's been out of an abundance of of research. I've identified uh in my, and I'll speak to my neighborhood specifically, but I think it applies everywhere, there are three specific uh forces at play. Um constituents essentially to this, uh they're stakeholders, we have the community of people, which is across, it transcends uh any specific demographic. That are are and are are having a difficulty with the police and they need redress and they need very specific, they have very specific. Incredibly urgent concerns and those must be addressed, then we have the second group who turn to the police often and their experience with the police is that they help them, they save them, they protect them. And they wanna have and they also feel in their own way that they have certain issues in regards to NYPD. That they want uh addressed as well, and then we have the third group, which is the NYPD itself. And that like you said, uh without addressing the the agents of of involved, you'll never get anything done, you write any law you want, if you're not talking to the. Specific police officers and they're not doing what is on the books, as we've seen already, then it does, then it's immaterial. So um I'll start with the most urgent, which is the community being affected by police brutality, uh what the the most, what I hear and what I feel. As the most pressing concern is the inability to uh navigate, it's so opaque, the disciplinary procedure. Or if you have a cop that's beating on someone and being brutal and committing crimes, how do you go about that? Uh is very, very Byzantine and lengthy and uh my proposal there is we can circumvent. While while you know, ultimately if I'm elected, uh I would caucus with the black caucus on these matters and I think they have, you know, they have incredibly nuanced views and and have lived experience and much. Much lo- uh much longer lifelong uh experiences confronting this, but at a local level, what I've seen is there's a way to circumvent. And 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 use a different channel to address uh police overreach and police brutality and that's the community board. The community board can liaison with uh the police department and they have the ability to bring in at any given time for their weekly meeting. The local precinct officer and even sometimes the officer themselves for on the record. Public hearings right then and that is incredibly important, if you have an officer who's breaking the law and committing crimes. That you can bring them in and have a transparent uh effect and have power in that conversation, that changes your interaction with the police. When your constituency that feel that that not feel are experiencing this and 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 experiencing. Uh wrongdoing and not having any sort of redress, here's the redress, now here's the problem, in the Upper West Side, we have two. I'll be I'll use an example because you've seen the majority of the of these scenarios and the majority of crime criminal activity. Um in regards to policing is occurring around uh NYCHA. And certain projects in the sense that that's where a lot of the police presence ends up happening and um there's and I can speak to as I apologize, it's very long winded, but I have a lot to say on this.
No, no, I'm like, I'm, there's a lot of different points that I'm like also, no, keep going on, yeah.
Okay, so this and I have points on on in terms of NYCHA also where there's a lot of interfacing, um but there's only two. Uh people, citizens from public housing on the community board right now, two.
I'm I'm telling you, I also have some things that I, I I'm gonna just jump in, cause there's like.
Always interrupt me, yeah.
Some sort of things that I don't really like necessarily uh or have questions about, right?
Please, please, I love to be interrupted, I'm Jewish, it's the biggest thing for us, constant interruption.
Yeah. Okay, so. I appreciate that, yeah, actually some of that is is asking about the Jewish angle on that too, but I'm gonna get to this other angle first, so. First of all, you talk about the involvement of the community board and I like that and then I also have questions about, because some community boards are run better than others, in fact, some community boards are just down like becoming problematic, so.
Hmm. Hmm.
Uh and some of them are good, so like I'm like twisted, like you know, should we really, you know, and also, um the second idea which might come into it is.
That's harsh. Hmm.
Um talking about Jewish community, I know the Hasidics have their own police force and this is actually very interesting to me, you take a look at the black community, a lot of times when you look at.
Hmm.
Security for events used to hire Nation of Islam to come in to run security for event, not saying that, you know, um.
No, I know what you mean, youth programs, they have their own, in the seventies, eighties, nineties, there's a lot of grassroots organizations that move out in security.
Well, yeah, the old. Yeah, so how has like, you know, like, cause I'm not, I know that it exists, I don't know like what the level of satisfaction was within Hasidic community.
Hmm.
For Hasidic police, but that might be a solution in terms of like finding people in their own community, right, yeah, so it's not like that's what you're getting with.
Hmm. That's a terrific idea and something that a a member of.
Yeah. Well, it's not like that's what you're getting with, you know, you want the, yeah, you want to go to the old community, right?
That is what I'm getting at, yeah. Yeah, it's a terrific idea, cause you're agreeing with me.
Yeah, well, yeah, I know, I know, I know, yeah, I know, but yeah.
Those are always terrific good. That's what I want and in terms of I was, yeah, in terms of the direct action of the people in the communities that are feeling affected by uh police overreach.
So how is the Hasid community, are they overall very happy with?
This community board is not, oh.
Are 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 Hasid people generally happy with Hasidic uh with people from Hasidic, from the police?
So my community, the Jewish community that I'm from and uh is is modern Orthodox, which is a little different, but in in Baltimore, where um my family is from.
Yeah. Oh damn, that's the hood, bro.
Yeah, yeah, and it's, yes, there's a lot of uh criminal activity and that has been a really effective, really good measure.
That's most cool.
Uh which is that they're called a shomer, which means guards in Hebrew, and and they're not armed, they don't have guns, it's meant to watch, shomer is actually.
Yeah. Saying Hasidic people aren't beating other Hasidic people down for doing crimes, like a mobster, like if they gotta regulate, they gotta regulate, like, cause Jews are the toughest hell, yeah, right, yeah.
There's definitely, no, well, no. There's certainly, no, there there's actually my friend who's who's uh part of the campaign, he's writing a screenplay on that on a specific case, which is interesting, we can talk about after the interview.
Yeah.
No, there's certainly um security, I mean, there's regulation at at play, but something that's been helpful is you do have situations where.
Right.
It's it's so sensitive and so challenging, where you don't wanna be calling in because it's very integrated communities in certain ways and very, very close together communities where I'm from in Baltimore. Between that are very diverse, um and and the relations between us, I feel, in my experience, is good. Because we don't call the police, we have people that are there, they have flashlights and they have the walkie talkies. And they're not, and they're gonna regulate, they'll they'll, you know.
I have the Hasidic police force.
Our our particular one, the shomer, yeah.
Cause they have their own, yeah, they have their own police force.
They have their own auxiliary force, which observes and tries to intervene and does their very best to not call the police, that's the objective, don't call the police.
Yeah. Yeah.
The police should be pursuing the the places, ideally, things that we cannot deal with, things where you need guns and sexually, you know, sexual violence, which is something that has to be bonded.
Yeah.
That's the U, which everyone's favorite law and order, that has to be boosted, I mean, that that's something that that is, that's there's an example where you don't, you don't want shomer in there and they're not allowed and so.
Yeah. Yeah, I noticed that a lot of times when you talk about these, when you hear about these new ideas being projected by these media pundits, by other candidates. They don't talk about already existing models, studying what's already there, what's already worked, they have just something that they read or some hot word, some word salad that comes out, you know what I mean?
Hmm. Very much.
But you actually have, which is cool, which is unique about you, you have like some actually existing model that you can pull from, so I'm I'm interested in, I am more, I only have limited time, so.
Hmm.
Yeah, this, I know they have good results there, so and actually that sounds like a way for the fund the police to work.
Well. Yes, well.
Maybe in a way that um, so that's interesting, I can see a conversation with the fund the police there.
And and at NYCHA, there was. At NYCHA, yeah, I mean, I I at NYCHA, they have, uh I mean, the projects over in Amsterdam houses, they do have, and I I've I've spoken to the shareholders, stakeholders. On the on in terms of residents and the police, they in the tenant association, which is very disconnected from the community board and one of the reasons it's so broken, our community board is very broken. Um they have events where they interface with the operator, the the officer in charge and they they are, it's sort of something along the lines of a town hall. So the cops that are inside those communities and and are monitoring, I found in my experience from speaking to them, as well as the stakeholders. Have been a very responsible actors and agents, I feel, and obviously I have to research more and more, um because I think partly. When you know there's recourse and you know you're gonna hear from the community at large in in a public forum, that changes the equation. And uh and I think by, you know, I think there are a lot of good cops and there are a lot of cops that wanna do, and the ones especially that I've talked to in this neighborhood and I think. They it helps them in many ways, they also can find out about how they can best focus their energy, so they're not dealing with stuff that ideally that somewhere like. The shomer for us or or an equivalent organization that could be established here could deal with and they could focus specifically on violent criminals, which is a tiny, tiny. Group within the city that do horrible things and need to be caught and need to be going to jail and is totally distinct from the vast population, I mean. So then, uh but the large portion of my constituents, the concern is very much in terms of not not, they want the police to help them, there's been a spike in crime. Two weeks ago, there was five open air daytime robberies inside banks, um it's been a major issue, I've spoken to homeless people as well, who are living in the neighborhood for ten years, who've said they've never felt less safe. Um and I think a lot of that is coming from uh slapdash, uh not thoughtful police, not any police reform, not police defunding, but simply deploying them where they. They'll have six police officers in front of uh Trump Tower and they'll have a bunch just in front of their station and that's just not, we have resources, that's not thoughtful, that's not helping anyone. Um and and in those cases, I mean, I think a lot of what it comes down to and a lot of them agree is we have a large portion of the the. Crimes are coming from um or a lot of the public safety concerns that and a lot of the things that stress, that stretch uh police resources are things that we better dealt with. Um by programs like STAR from Denver, which are which are um mental health outreach programs, a lot of emotionally disturbed incidents and then for the for the uh. Specific criminal incidents that are going on, um where I've seen success. And where I've seen progress has been from what I'm talking about, about an effective community board and effective block associations, where I've seen and been involved with people who say. Hey, there've been a number of robberies at the Dwayne Reed on Seventy Second Street, put a cop car there, there's one guy that's been robbing and and scaring people. And that one guy then is arrested and that one guy should go to jail and the thirty other people that might have been checked and harassed are fine. And that's ideal, ideally, and and that's how we can do it, where we can have a cohesive, effective, political and powerful infrastructure that connects to the police and liaisons with the police. One of my opponents, Sarah Lynn, is currently on the community board, she's currently the community liaison to the police precinct and her language around policing is very, very outspoken. And I and I know from speaking to police officers off the record, they feel very strongly and not so positively about some of that rhetoric. And I I while there's many things I can agree with about police criticism, I cannot agree with a waste of power. And that is a waste of power, if you're liaison liaisoning with the police, you have to say, there are some good cops, I wanna elevate those cops, this was a good thing that happened. Can we have that person interface more and hey, if there's a cop that's been doing something bad in this precinct and breaking the law, can we identify that specific cop? And have a relationship with the precinct officer where that guy's gotta go or that guy's been talked to and that's on the ground and that's how we're gonna enact reform. We don't need necessarily even to pass laws as urgently as we need this on the ground infrastructure work, cause that can do something right away. And that and that's that's another wasted opportunity, when I was at my Fordham Law Forum, they said to me as if it was a good answer, there's two NYCHA residents on the community board of fifty one. And half of the priorities on the community board are NYCHA related, it's disgusting, it's outrageous and it's so ineffectual and they have.
Yeah.
Talked so much more than me publicly and they never get those tweets, cause they're they're very articulate about their ideas about how to reform police.
Yeah, I I I was almost at the age of sixteen, so I've also like, I've stayed really close to the homeless community, I've also, um you know. Um definitely had some different hardships that would be kept me close to the, you know, and kept me involved.
Hmm.
So some of the things that you're saying, um I I I also, I'm just so you know, I also got a conversation with Assemblyman Alan Young. After teaching self-defense, I've also taught police officers, stuff like that too.
Oh, that's fantastic, so jujitsu specifically for for grappling.
Yeah. Hmm, well, you know, that was jujitsu.
No, like, jujitsu's not good now?
No, just, I don't, no, jujitsu's excellent, I taught I taught self-defense.
Okay.
Um, you know.
Sorry, I was gonna say.
No, it's okay, uh jujitsu's good, so you know, Krav Maga also is excellent, like you guys, uh you know.
Yeah, the Gracies have been wanting to volunteer with NYPD, I'd love to facilitate that, but yes, sir, please continue, so you're saying that there's some stuff you wanna push back on this, cause I'm still learning.
Yeah. So some, some of the things that you say, like, you know, are part of the truth, but there's other parts to it that I also see as well.
Mm-hmm, I'd love to hear, please.
Um, yeah, so, you know, uh neither position is technically wrong, right, yeah, so like the, I I get where some people go. Overboard with the rhetoric, right, trying to really force a position, or maybe they've been frustrated for so long, or they just like, you know.
Hmm.
But also there's also uh benefits to keeping the door open, so actually, that's one of the strongest things about coalition, right, yeah, from.
Hmm.
Having like people in all the different angles, so I have people that are in, you know, and actually I work with Stephen Lee right now, who's actually uh fighting corruption in the police department and he's through with uh Detective Serpico, things like that.
Mm-hmm.
Nobody's talking about him, right, yeah, yeah.
Hell yeah, that's awesome, I haven't Googled that guy.
Exactly, so we're we're all like making these, you know, and he's in the police department with making certain moves and I have people that are pushing the other radical side of it, right?
Hmm. Hmm. Hmm.
But together, uh we can work together on certain angles, so I feel interesting and nothing that you said has been wrong, right, but I can't say that the people that are necessarily the community board member.
Hmm.
Who's taking the angles necessarily wrong, unless there's, like you said before, right, and that's one of the things that I really like about uh people who are um. Have experience like yourself, not necessarily political experience, but business experience in terms of getting things done.
Hmm.
In the end, we can take our platitudes, we can take our positions, whatever, but in the end, results matter.
Yes.
And in the end, right, yeah, so you can take a hard line and people are suffering because there's not a dialogue, people are suffering because we weren't able to come together on some policies.
Hmm.
Then that's a loss, there there's just no, there's no arguing about it, so sometimes you gotta swallow your pride, sometimes you gotta take that stand, so, you know.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, well, I have a, I mean, when I spoke to that rhetoric, I'm speaking about something I tried very hard to speak about, what I specifically firsthand know. And I'm hearing from officers and and people who are close with officers saying, I'm not, you know, I they're they're saying, I what all, when I'm hearing that level. Uh when I'm hearing that rhetoric, I'll speak to what you said, the coalition is a great idea, if you have a strong opinion, you know, you gotta be pragmatic, art of the po- uh politics is the art of the possible, if you have an opinion that's right, if you wanna get out.
Yeah.
And you happened in that moment to have a level of power where you can make a difference in a different direction and you know that rhetoric is gonna be detrimental to that effort. I just find that very, very difficult to swallow and I think it's 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 symptomatic of a sort of a disconnect from the reality of power and how to materially change things and.
I I also agree with you that there's there's multiple parties here that feel like the police still under attack, you know what I mean, and some of them are trying to do a good job and I appreciate them who are out there, it's a.
Hmm. Hmm.
They have a high suicide rate, it's not a very rewarding job, they it's a tough job and you hear someone banging on the door and you're scared and you gotta call somebody, somebody's gotta show up to take care of that problem.
Yes.
That's not a, that's that's a, that's a crazy job right there, respect, yes, so how are you gonna take care of them and their needs, but also take care of the people that have been.
Yes. Yes.
Like as you admitted, right, some people are treated unfairly, right, in some situations by, like how do you take care, how do you assure both parties that their needs are gonna be addressed?
Right. Yes.
Cause there's uh the people right now who are saying, you know, well, he's just gonna side with the the cops, he's gonna take the easy way out, that's not what you're saying, right?
Uh-huh, I hope that's, I hope they're not picking that, cause it's quite the opposite of what I'm saying, this is gonna be the hard way, it's already been very hard for me, I mean, this is a really hard.
So, yeah, so it's, it's so, exactly.
Hard thing, you know, much like what the cops say is that when they show up, it's it's always in the worst day of someone's life or a bad day, for me, when you're getting in these conversations, these are the hardest conversations and.
Yeah.
What I'm saying is that for the people that we wanna give more power to people that are feel that are being victimized and for the police, we wanna work. A a powerful, you know, you're talking about the uh an it's a larger, it's an institution that's larger than many militaries.
How do you make, right, how do you, right?
Nation and you wanna find the people, the pop police officers and the and like this person you mentioned, who sounds great, police officers and some Lieutenant Rodriguez, who I spoke to in this neighborhood, who's. One one of the cops that I've had really good uh relations with, who are who are saying and doing really good things and say, that's someone that needs to be promoted. That's someone that needs to be elevated in the community, that's someone that can liaison with other shareholders in the community and stakeholders of the community.
Right.
And get things done and utilize the power, whatever you wanna say.
So I like that, cause it sounds like it's something that's pretty easily achievable, right, you go to the to the thing, you say, look. It's good PR for the police department, right, it's good for the community, right, yeah, we're making a good example of these people, that's good.
Hmm.
But what about when it comes difficult, how will like, you know, we see the cops getting desk duty after they kill somebody, how will they know that you are the one to make sure, right?
Hmm. Hmm.
Like when when you have to draw the hard line, what what is your plan to take care of that that community or how are you gonna do that?
So for example, with desk duty, there's a situation where in between, what happened in between the murder Eric, what happened between Eric Gardner? Uh and the cop that killed him and then the next few years where he where he was still on the force and I mean, no one can disagree with that video, that is a horrendous nightmare video, that's traumatic for me. So I and any viewer, I mean, and if it's for me, then I can only imagine, I don't, I have not had the experience with many people at the police.
Right.
What happened in between that was a very opaque system where you cannot get on record trying to deal with these, you know, discuss what went down. But you can take it directly and immediately to the community board, you can start getting the minutes of that community board meeting and getting it on record. And getting and getting and that's powerful, that makes a difference if the cop did break the law in the legal case, because you wait, they if they slow walk you in any organization, I mean. With with a lot of organizations, when I've had to deal with the stuff in private work, they slow walk you, that makes your case that much more difficult. So giving them that power of immediate response and immediate FaceTime with a police officer that has power through the community board means something, but how do you get that? You have to have a real say on the community board, you can't get that, I mean, the community board that we have would be run very differently if other interest groups were were in. And it's not just in this issue, many issues uh were were had a large portion of seats, a deserved portion of seats. Of 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 the amount of seats that made sense, cause the community board is selected by the city council person and the borough president, it is not democratic, it's not. Of 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 the amount of seats that made sense, cause the community board is selected by the city councilperson and the borough president, it is not democratic, it's not transparent. They will not even tell you when they're gonna announce who they picked. So, that's a way where I said, what's something I could do right now, what's some direct action to make it better for people that, God forbid, experienced police brutality? Give them the power to have consequences, so that they can they can get that result and get it on record and have pushback and start having that dialogue. And for people that are concerned that there there is crime and crime is rising and that the police are not are not being allowed to do their job enough in regards to violent crime. It goes that way as well, where you can give that that info, and we can have a cohesive structure in each community that achieves that.
Right. Probably like three or times, like you you probably went to court at some point, right? Yeah.
Me?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So so right, so what happens is that you see, right, yeah, the. Your guy, right, the prosecutor for the other team or your defense attorney and the judge, they all hang out together every day, you know what I mean, every day they hang out together.
Right.
You're just outsiders coming in, who knows, they probably went back and said, how much can we get this guy for, the dress of money? It it feels like that a lot of times, you know what I mean, so the thing is that when you look at the community board, they're the ones who send out the grants to the community-based organizations, they are very connected to the money.
Yes. Yeah.
There's a lot of things going on, so, yeah, you could present there, it could get recorded in the minutes, it's been super frustrating just uh, thinking about all the different times that I've interacted with the police. Actually, funny thing is that my, actually, uh, you see my, uh, I I literally was living in New Brook, it's the second highest murder rate for a while, a huge environmental problem.
In the country?
Uh, no, in New York State, yeah, um, yeah, it's still pretty violent up there, there's huge crack of them going on up there, I'd love to move into these things and see where where the chains by which uh, property prices are tripled.
Oh, okay.
I know the Jewish community is moving in there heavily, so you may have heard about New Brook, yeah, it's it's doing pretty well right now.
Mm.
Uh, but anyways, uh, so the thing is that, um, within that community, uh. Community boards have a lot of uh, connections to, you know, and the minutes being recorded, so. I I moved out to New York City for the Tulsi campaign, because I saw there was no help really going down for the for for the stuff, right, my motorcycle got stolen. The thing is that the police refuse to take a report, you know what I mean?
Ah.
So, like, I had, they told me that I could talk to the community board, I said fuck that, I I didn't, even myself knowing. I've worked with community boards, I work with community-based organizations, I know the breakdown, and I said, will the community board work, I didn't have faith that it was possible. Right, but I decided to just take it to the community directly myself, so I started a flyer campaign, uh, and actually I got my bike back a year later on unrelated, which was weird, yeah?
Oh. Oh, that's weird, oh, it's a shame they didn't get it, I was hoping a happy story.
Uh, but yeah. Well, political pressure, right, um, made it come up, it's possible, right, who knows?
Thank you. Yeah, well, uh.
But even later on, uh, so like the.
You mentioned our environmental, I wanna hit on that, but in terms of community board, I just wanna say something to the other constituents who are gonna hear this, I mean.
Okay.
Probably not your listeners, but the other constituents who are focused on saved streets and the cops, this is they're equally, if not more angry about the community board not working for them.
Yeah.
And and it's be, this is an organ of incredible power, like you just said, an effective responsive community board with that fight situation. That would that would try to be helped, their constituents can immediately get police officers in front of them, with and high up police officers to answer questions.
Yeah.
And that's so powerful, you see the people that are getting in front of the community board, when the cops get in front of the community board, it's disjointed meetings, if you watch the meetings going on in my neighborhood.
Yeah.
They're disjointed, there's not communication, you're not getting, you find out, the what you find out is specifics about frustrations, not solutions to those frustrations and answers. And people talking on the community board side as if they don't have power, it it's some sort of shame around power and some sort of grandstanding. Where that that could really, that could really change, so, but on the environmental side, and um, this is something I tried to talk about, I I, broken windows. We all, I mean, anyone who's politically engaged, as I'm sure knows about broken windows, I would guess a lot of people don't know, and I'm in touch with the writers of the study. Is the study is not called Broken Windows, it's called Empty Lots, Broken Windows. And the notion is that the main thing that benefits communities and can prevent crimes like that is the filling and maximizing of unused space. And what they've done in Philly, those writers of that law is they did not go around implementing implementing broken windows, they went around filling lots. And you look at the lots that have been filled, and you see, and the communities flourish, it makes such a difference, the environment and investing in it, and crime is reduced. A lot of crime is is environmentally induced in the sense of what else are you gonna do? Or I mean, it's it's like environment really has a lot to do with your behavior, and and uh, and so that's, and I mean, in so many ways, and and with NITIA, the lead is a fucking, sorry, I'm sorry.
That's cool, that's cool, no, I.
I feel passionate.
I swear on my, I swear on my my channel, you know what I mean, something that we all do, that's all, you know, sometimes it's a fucked up situation, we need to really bring the bring the intensive.
Yeah, well, it's exciting to talk to you, cause you're someone who takes uh, who takes direct action, and and so it gets me whipped up, because I've had to, you know, dial back some of this stuff, for example. Um, you know, uh, the environmental stuff or or direct action, and you know, a lot of the people on my campaign have talked about back to what you said about, um. A security force from the community, um, doing that for their different communities, and uh, I think it's a phenomenal idea, and I can't see the NYPD lining, I mean, they wanna be able to do their job well too. And uh, it it it's it's, so yeah, so so for everyone involved, if you're the if you're the most conservative anti-defund police person, and if you're the most. Radical defund the police person, we, this is, we agree completely, a strong responsive community board can deliver the results we all want. And because it will create better policing, just by by definition of utilizing the power that's just completely squandered. Uh, and of of getting accountability and that transparency, which is not available, I mean, that's a lot of the conversation right now in terms of defund the, not as much to, you know, reform of police is reforming, I mean. Is reforming the the disciplinary methods.
Yeah.
And no conversation I've been a part of in my neighborhood about utilizing an unused channel of of those conversations. So I I couldn't really talk about this, I had a lot more, I don't wanna waste.
Yeah, yeah. Another another problem with police reform that kinda ties into actually the subway to another topic is educational reform.
Yes.
Um, so we're gonna talk about the SHSAT in a moment, but I actually have a, if we, if you go online, you could take a look at Hunter College Corruption. And I actually about like maybe uh, maybe I forgot how many years ago, several years ago, I actually, I, like I said, I've been in this game for a while.
Mm.
Uh, Hunter College, actually their books are publicly available because of the um, because of their community school.
Mm.
So I show you how to access their their books, and I show you how to go into there, and this is tied to the lead thing as well, right, yeah, I show how to access their books.
Mm.
And then, um, you can see that their administrators are clearly spending money, they're going on trips, they're having cell phones paid for, nobody got arrested.
Mm.
Nobody lost their job, in fact, those two administrators that work at the school, I believe to this day.
Wow.
Yeah, so, um, you know, the thing is that, uh, the cops are busting one set of group of people, but not busting another group of people.
Yeah.
And that's definitely a huge issue as well, right, are they arresting Wall Street, are they arresting the Harvey Weinstein's and Epstein's, and you hear about the sexual, uh, you know, stuff going on at the high places and.
Yeah.
It's just, uh.
Right, where does change have, I I think that's such an important thing, I mean, Hunter's outside my purview, I don't believe that's in the district necessarily, it's definitely at least, at very least, something I haven't been connected to.
Yeah. I'm I'm getting into that district. Oh, I'm getting up.
District six, our district?
I'm I'm gonna hit him up though, yeah, I I've been working on it, yeah.
Oh, their district, yeah, but regardless of education reform, it's it's Byzantine, and it's a union that's so powerful and so challenging and complex, and my efforts to direct action have been.
Yeah. Hit him up, just.
Similar to circumventing the stuff that is gonna take years, circumventing education, where a a lot of this stuff through the internet can be provided, and there's so much energy uh, available.
What what about the SHSAT and with magnet schools, what's your position on that, SHSAT, yes or no, because a lot of people.
Ah, yes, I mean, yes or no is a hard uh, a hard question, I mean.
Well, you can have in-between, I think.
I I think that it's uh, of it's something that is is incredibly new, I think the nature of education is is nuanced, and and I think I don't have yes or no yet, um. Or I don't know if I'll have yes or no, but I'll tell you what's missing from it is social, uh, social education, and I think that's something vital. And you have newly uh, published academic studies on social intelligence, and that's something that's gonna be massively important for the workplace of the future. Um, and it's something that I think is democratic in the sense that anyone can can learn and be sociable and have that social intelligence, be able to navigate a room in any community. I think that's a lot more attainable, rather than, you know, you go to a crowded school that's underfunded and you're having trouble learning math, not out of a lack of of intellectual ability, but out of a lack of opportunity. But you're in a social situation, virtually most people are in some sort of social situation, and we can identify gifted people, who knows in ten years what robots will be doing, what we'll need. But one thing I do know though, and I've seen from my friends who who I went to, I was fortunate to go to private school and go and to go to uh, college. Um, and I've seen friends who went to better colleges than me and got better grades and are unemployed, because they cannot interview well, and they and they cannot handle social situations, um. And that's a problem, I know that there's strong feelings around this, I know that the Asian American community in uh, New York City is very, very uh, in support. Of of the current apparatus around testing, and and so that that, I'm trying to be creative, and I'm trying to take that approach, and what can we add, um. Not quite yes or no, apologies.
Yeah, that's fair, that's fair, um, okay, so, you know, uh, the people wondering about that one, there there you go. Now, the thing is that, um, one thing that I remember that, uh, you you produce films or you you you're a director, what do you?
I do, yeah, yeah, I produce, um, and I do some film films, yeah.
Of course, so that's, so you're a producer, so you actually, so one of the things that I do, like I've had several businesses, I've I also was homeless at the age of sixteen, so I've been. On multiple levels in this and can look at the game from different angles, but.
Mm.
One of the things that when I do, when I have business, I I bring in people to hire, right, I say, what do you think are the most profitable, and what do you think is, right, the least profitable aspects of my business? And if they have no, sometimes they have no clue, they have a degree, they have no clue, I'm like, why are you in this business? Why are you wasting my time, you know, I mean, you have no idea what's profitable, like where where you should spend your time, you know, what are you doing, yeah, okay? So, uh, we know that one of the biggest uh, issues in New York City is corruption, and how many people do I issue, do I interview that say, oh, I know corruption is an issue, but I have no idea of any specifics. I can't point to any problem, I can't say I'm gonna fix any specific thing, cause I might step on someone's toes, that's what it is, okay?
Mm-hmm.
It's not that they don't know, they're scared, we get what I mean, or, you know, or maybe they're just really cool.
It's scary, Serpico is a scary, that's a horror movie to me.
It, there it is, man, but, can you, right, but what's your grip, right, we know corruption is a problem in New York City, right, yeah, and if everybody just keeps looking the other way, it ain't gonna get fixed.
Yeah. Yeah.
What's your, right, what what do you know about this, or how are you gonna fix this?
I'm a positive guy, I wanna be a friendly fella, and I wanna deliver for my community, but having said that, I mean, something with producing that I feel like is so, is incredibly applicable. Is and you can't really call corrupt, because it's it's legally fully legal, but you'll have situations where, so I'm I I'm a producer out of necessity, cause I I'm an independent filmmaker. And if you're an independent filmmaker.
Me too, I get it, I'm an independent activist.
Yes, so you're on the same, we're on the same exact way, like, it's the same, I think it probably is very, I'm excited to talk after as well, just share tips and and stories, but.
Yeah. Absolutely, absolutely.
You have situations where I'll talk to people, I'll say, how much did your movie cost?
Yeah.
And they'll say, three million dollars.
Yeah.
And then I'll talk to someone else, and then I'll talk to them confidentially, and they'll say, I did another movie this year that cost three hundred thousand, and it looks the exact same.
Yeah.
Used the same equipment, and a lot went on where there was tax kickbacks, there was produce, huge producing fees that didn't directly go into, um, the movie.
Yeah.
As a producer, I I mean, as a producer, we're out of necessity, I'm not about that, I'm about getting the movies made and being independent, so. My job always as producer is to get the budget as low as possible, and I evaluate some of these budgets, I see a lot of fat, and I don't, I'm not gonna try.
Yeah.
Do the Serpico side of things of who who is responsible as much, I mean, except on a very high level, I think Shirley Macrae with Thrive is a travesty. But what I'm trying to do is the numbers and identify what physically, what technologically are we delivering, and how much does that cost? And I think when that's publicly available and and identifiable, it becomes a lot harder to fudge things, so that's, I guess, where my value added would be, uh, in office.
I like that actual, um, I as a business owner, I I definitely see the uh, see the strategy there, I think a lot of other people will, you know what I mean, so that's cool, yeah.
Okay, I hope so.
I like that, I think Vitaly might like you, yeah, he's a business owner as well, he, I just, uh, I think with him last night, the the independent third party, uh, child review right there, yeah, so, um.
Oh, right, right. Well, we meet him.
So, I actually feel your style, you 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 definitely come with a different energy and approach than a lot of candidates, and uh, you know, a different uh. Level of uh, preparation, some of them are just. Let's be real, let's be real.
I mean, yeah.
So, yeah, man, um, so.
A lot of us perform in a lot of political entertainment.
I think you're awesome, uh, tell me a little bit more about, um, actually, I'm into this guy's spot and his and his campaign office, we we got other things going on, cause this guy has a documentary coming about the whole running process.
We are, we're recording a documentary, uh, which is shit, which is focused on the exact steps you need to run. And demystifying it and showing that it's not as daunting as some people like you'd believe, and it actually could be a lot of fun.
Yeah.
Uh, and that's the goal of it, and why I've allowed it, I mean, I'm sure embarrassing things will will happen being filmed and, you know. But uh, I I will, I think it'll be worth it, because uh, I think when people see how, what what the joy of it and the meaning you get out of it, and the accessibility of it will.
And as a long time activist, that's what I see that this movement exactly needs, we need more, the thing is that, right, you can't count on a savior figure coming in and and rescuing you. We need to have a higher level of political awareness in the populace itself to really make some of these changes happen.
Yeah.
So.
Citizens.
I guess what you're doing is kinda the mock kind of process and making it more en- encouraging, uh. You know, participation from others, which is a part of a lot of things that we're doing here in New York City, some of the most exciting things that we're doing right now with Fiocino. Opening up the voting roles, open sourcing, making things more available, so.
Mm.
I really think they're cool, how can people follow you, you putting up regularly on Twitter, like what, like you got a website, how can people find?
Thanks. We're not very active on Twitter, I learned the lesson of Anthony Weiner, no relation, that uh, maybe not the most friendly medium for us, but uh, uh, we have a website, zachweiner.com. And uh, you can contact us on there, and I believe we have our phone number up to call at any time, and uh, we just, we loved, I love to talk, maybe to a fault. And um, I uh, I I just please contact us there, yeah, we're looking for people, and if you have an idea specifically where we can enact it in my neighborhood, some sort of pilot program, something you can showcase. We have resources and human res- human capital where we can deliver on that, and uh, our organization, I mean, I have a phenomenal group around me, I'm. I'm believe my campaigns, I believe in the people around me more than anything, so, uh.
You got a lot of ideas, that's cool, yeah.
Well, I'm excited to hear that, I I'm very excited to hear that.
Okay, cool, so, uh, so like really, it's mostly website, you're not doing Facebook so much or anything, right?
We're not having on social media, cause I mean, I I know from personal experience that it's just, it's not, um, it doesn't lend itself the nuance, and I think that. Uh, you know, I mean, Twitter literally limits the amount of words you can use, and these are such, I enjoy talking about it, but also there's such complicated, challenging issues to to discuss.
Yeah. I like that, because for a lot of activists out there, right, I actually call them armchair activists, you have to be careful, cause it's a trap.
Mm.
You can feel like you're reaching all these people, you're talking to same people again and again, you need to convert new people, you need to go out and stretch, so, yeah, uh, yeah.
Yeah, and in person, and something, yeah, with Trump, uh, in the first two and a half years of his of his presidency, and being on social media and reading the news on my phone, it it really was scary time.
Yeah.
You think you're doing something, but you're posting, so, yeah.
It can be part of the package, but it cannot be the whole package, also the fact that someone else is in between their distribution, like being an independent film producer.
Yes.
You understand the problems of someone getting in between you and your message actually getting to the people, so.
Oh, yeah. Right. Middlemen are very dangerous.
Yeah, so respect to, uh, you know, independent thinker, what's up, yeah?
Yeah.
So, um, any last words you wanna get out to the people before, uh, uh, before.
If you have an idea, if you have something you wanna do seriously, and you're a good good-hearted person, or even a fine-hearted person. Please contact me, and and I'll try to make it happen here on the Upper West Side, through my organization, we we are doing some things, and we we're desperate for more. Uh, really, we we're eager for more, uh, we think this could be the dawn of, and I think it is, of a really fantastic era in New York City politics, and definitely on the Upper West Side of high engagement. And let's make it a creative one, let's make it a, let's make it a, a thriving one, let's reach really far and see where we can get.
It's a dark day in our nation, when high-level authorities will seek to use every method to silence dissent. The truth must be told.
And if you want the truth, you need to check out independent media producers just like myself, DJ L seven. You should subscribe and hit the bell icon to get notifications when I release a new video.
Truth of these words is beyond doubt.
We are all the major platforms, that includes Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, and of course YouTube. Unfortunately, we have definitely seen that these mainstream outlets will cave to corporate interests, so we encourage you to join our independently moderated communities of Reddit and Discord. We also encourage you to subscribe to us on Bitshut Daily Motion, so you can see the content that YouTube doesn't want us to let you see. Hey, now it's time for the most important part of the video, that's right, it's time for us to tell you about the Taking Action Group. Do you need an activist, or maybe there's no activists around willing to help with your cause, and you need to learn to become an activist? That's exactly why we're here. Every week, we get up with people from across the nation, in fact, even sometimes internationally, and we develop strategies and a game plan to address the issues that are affecting all of us. Every week, myself from New York City, and of course, my co-host Lisa from Los Angeles provide a coast-to-coast perspective on what's going on in the country. If you want to donate to help out with expenses, travel, equipment, you know, stuff like that, then I definitely appreciate it, and you could hit us off at Venmo or PayPal, thanks a lot. Hey, by the way, we also have a merch store, so check it out. Oh, my goodness, it seems like you've reached the end of the video, so make sure you check out some of our other videos, uh, make sure you subscribe, this is your last chance to do so, so thanks a lot. And looking forward to seeing you on the next one, hope you guys enjoyed, please comment below, if you have any questions or issues you'd like me to address. And if you're an activist, the time to make things happen is now.